Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon and welcome. I want to say good afternoon and welcome to all of my board colleagues that are joining us today, Dr. Stubblefield, and to all of our staff and to all of our guests and visitors that are joining us this afternoon. I want to say thank you for joining us and for being with us today. Welcome to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and to our regularly scheduled board meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 15, 2022. It is 5:00 PM and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And as we do at every board meeting, I'll read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, I want to say thank you to everybody for joining us, especially all of our students and employees who we will recognize in a few moments, and your families and guests. Thank you for joining us today. So with that, I will ask Ms. Smith to please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda posted as of today, November 15, 2022.
Don't move.
Second.
Moving seconded questions. Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and jump right into our agenda. First up is, again, one of my favorite moments of any of our board meetings that we have, are our board awards and special recognition. So tonight, we have the honor, since it is our only regularly scheduled board meeting, to recognize all of our students and employees of the month. So we'll go ahead and do that this afternoon.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, all of the Kansas City, Kansas School Board members, and all who support Kansas City, Kansas School District, good evening. I have the privilege tonight, we have several people that we're going to recognize. Once we recognize the teacher or the student is announced, please, we want that student or teacher to join us in the front for a picture. Our communications team will capture a picture of you for social media and the webpage recognition. Then after all of our recognitions tonight, we will have three photos, the first being with the student or teacher, the superintendent and the board. The second, we ask our nominating staff and principal to join. Our third, we ask for our families that are here to support to join the group. But first of all, we are going to have a quick glimpse of our Teacher of the Year and our Horizon winners. And after we see this short clip, I'm going to bring up Crystal White. She's our Executive Director for the Excellence Foundation, and she will introduce these wonderful people to you.
Some of the most rigorous, but also some of the most popular in the building because she takes the time to make sure students understand what they're learning. Her classes are some of the most rigorous, but also some of the most popular in the building because she takes the time to make sure students understand what they're learning.
I would like to announce that Ms. Bree is Bree Nelson is the Horizon Award winner.
You all can give them a round of applause. At this time, I'm going to bring Crystal Watson up, and she will introduce them.
So glad she said Watson. Good evening, everyone, and to the Board of Education, good evening. I have the wonderful privilege of providing a very special award for our Horizon Award and Kansas Teacher of the Year nominees. So first, I'd like to tell you on behalf of the Foundation for Excellence, we are so proud of you, and we're so proud that we want to give you a beautiful donation tonight, a wonderful gift. So first is Brianna Nelson. Her principal is Heather Calvert. She's at Grant Elementary School. She teaches third grade. Please come on up. We need, everybody need to see what we doing here. So Ms. Brianna Nelson is getting a $500 check from the Kansas City, Kansas School Foundation for Excellence. Our next Horizon Award winner is Miranda Nichols. She's at Wind Out High School, Go Bulldogs. Mary Stewart is her principal. She teaches grades nine through 12. She's our English, English Language Arts teacher. We're going to go up here. She's got your little check there. She is being awarded $500. And for our Kansas Teacher of the Year, I believe she goes into the bucket for the other Kansas teachers. Hopefully, she's going to win. We had two teachers from KCKPS. The first was Leann Richardson. She's at Schlegel High School. Dr. Yolanda Thompson is her principal. She teaches grades nine through 12, Biology, Medical Interventions, Human Body Systems, and Twilight School. And Leann could not be here tonight, but please give a round of applause for Ms. Leann Richardson. And then our last is Celia Moreno. And Celia is John F. Kennedy Elementary School. Bob Wilcox is her principal, third grade teacher. Congratulations. So I have the money in my hand. So when we go take pictures, I'll make sure to hand you your checks here tonight. Thank you so much and congratulations again.
I also have the privilege to introduce to you our Employees of the Month for the month of November. We are fortunate this evening to have two employees for the month of November. We have Megan Smith and Jeremy Todd. If they both could come up, Megan Smith. Both of these teachers have been doing an amazing job this year with their graphics and social media accounts. They were recommended by Mr. Rick Malone, and he said it had to be a dual effort. He asked, he asked them at the beginning of the year if they would run, lead, the controlling content via social media. They both are active coaches throughout multiple seasons, but still continue to find time and recruit students to support their work. They focus on highlighting everything in the building, both athletically and academically. They produce high-quality graphics and short clips that are seen by students, staff, and parents in the community. They also empower and produce content that is highly viewed. You will find each of them at multiple events throughout the year, and you will find a group of students equipped with a camera, iPod, or GoPro. Their work highlights the amazing things at Sumner Academy, and they continue to promote the positive things in their building and district. We congratulate Jeremy Todd and Megan Smith. Thank you for your dedication to our students, teachers of Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, and members of the Board of Directors. I'm excited to be with you this evening to present our Students of the Month for the month of November. I want to begin with a quote by Nelson Mandela, "The youth of today are the leaders of tomorrow." I believe that I can speak for the USD 500 Student of the Month Committee when I say that it was a joy to read about our youth leaders from our many different campuses that are being honored tonight. As such, Dr. Sutherland said we had two, so we are in the mood for doubles because tonight, we are honored to have two middle school honorees this month. The students who have been nominated are representative of our scholars in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, who embody our Kansas social, emotional, and character development standards. Our first nominee of the month, representing our early childhood students, is Dejeané Harris. Dejeané is an early childhood scholar at North Central Office Early Childhood Center. Dejeané was nominated by Megan Robertson, her teacher. She was nominated under the pillar of positive behavior. She commented that Dejeané is a bright light in the classroom. She is kind, helpful, and gives the best hugs to start the day during morning greetings. She always steps in as a role model for any peers that are facing a challenge, whether it's calming a friend down or helping to invite them to play. She will lend a hand to help anyone, even grownups. We are so lucky to call Dejeané a part of our school family, and we are happy to celebrate her positive behavior. Some fun facts about Dejeané. She loves playing with friends and meeting new people. Her favorite food is chicken, and when she grows up, she wants to be a police officer. Congratulations, Dejeané. Our Elementary Student of the Month is Donna Miranda Valdez. Donna is a fifth-grade student at Noble Prentice Elementary School and was nominated by her teacher, Mr. David Berry. Mr. Berry recalled he first met Donna when she walked into his second-grade class almost halfway through the year. She spoke no English, was shy, and very quiet. Before long, he noticed how she listened to everything, took it in, and applied it to all of her lessons. She especially showed growth and confidence in math and science. What stood back out, what stood out back then was her high character and her sense of why she was in school. She came every day to learn and become a greater version of herself, always trying, failing, then trying again, and then succeeding, and never complaining. Donna is now a fifth grader, and Mr. Berry is again her teacher this year. He notes there are few things more satisfying as a teacher than to be able to see a student learn, grow, and change. And after three years, I can say that Donna is truly a master of self-empowerment, the perfect model for how to take seriously one's education. She is a role model for her peers as a listener and doer. The way she carries herself every day is noticed by all. The other students in the class are amazed. They understand and respect how she quietly leads them, always being an example. Congratulations. Oh, I forgot to tell you, Donna is a fantastic soccer player. Our first middle school Student of the Month is Mr. Vance Collins. Vance is a sixth-grade student at Carl B. Bruce Middle School. He was nominated by his theater teacher, Monica Shores. She noted that Vance always comes to school with a positive and productive mindset. His integrity is always clear and present. He's always one of the first to participate, to encourage us, and to demonstrate classroom expectations. Empathy is the number-one expectation at the school. This is especially important in theater class that is all about interacting and collaborating with others. His presence alone has helped to create a safe learning space for all students. She and the school community are proud of Vance and especially grateful to have him as a student. He has been nominated under the pillar of positive behavior, and we're honored to have him as a student leader in our district. Fun fact about Vance, he likes math. He wants to play football and basketball, and he wants to go to KU and be a Jayhawk. Our second Middle School of the Month, Student of the Month, is Millie Boadilla Valacio. Millie is a seventh-grade scholar who was nominated by her math teacher at Rosedale Middle School. She has been nominated under the pillar of outstanding academics. Her teacher, Mr. Bean, may note he would like to pick more than one category for Millie because she is more than just a great student. Millie is an amazing person and extremely hard worker who makes the classroom fun in many ways. Mr. Bean noted that Millie arrived from Honduras, came there as a fourth-grade student. After only three years, her command of the English language is outstanding. He may note that as a scholar, she is in attendance daily and demonstrates the characteristics of a persistent learner in class. A powerful comment that he made, "She is the kind of student I would love to build all of my classes around." Fun fact about Millie, Millie also loves math and draw and says that she likes Rosedale because the teachers always pour into them and help to prepare them for college and life. A message for other students, always be respectful. Congratulations, Millie. Our High School Student of the Month is Pang Thang. Pang is a junior at Washington High School and has been recommended by Mrs. Deborah Hutton, the librarian at the school. She nominated Pang based on exemplifying positive behavior. In her nomination, she said Pang is an amazing young man. He is always kind and helpful. I've never seen him without a smile on his face. He drops by the library almost every day. He will do little things without asking, like wiping off tables and straightening the chairs. He has a wonderful sense of humor and always makes the staff members laugh. Aside from these quote-unquote "little things," the most important thing I've discovered is that he is a sweet soul. He shared his poetry with many other staff members, which is beautiful. Pang is a wonderful example of what a Washington High School student should aspire to be. He is a kind soul who makes a difference by being himself and strives for excellence every day. It is for this reason we recommend him for the USD 500 High School Student of the Month. Fun thing about Pang, he loves communicating with friends and meeting new people. He wants to go to college, but he doesn't know what he wants to do, but he is going to make a difference, and he is honored to receive this award tonight. Congratulations, Pang Thang. They're excited.
All right. Thank you all for that. Again, one of our favorite times as a board to be able to recognize our students and our Employees of the Month and all of our employees. Congratulations to all of you and your families. Don't go anywhere. We're going to take some pictures with you. You're going to have an opportunity so that we can show you off and celebrate you for the remainder of the month. So again, congratulations. Before we go, so just for our board, just again, we're going to take a recess, but we'll also go straight into executive session. The next agenda item is an executive session. So we'll recess for 10 minutes, but I'd like to entertain a motion to recess to executive session at 5:30 for five minutes, coming back at 5:35.
Don't move.
Moving seconded questions. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Miss Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Miss Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, no.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Our next agenda item, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Dr. Stubblefield?
Good evening, everyone. I have just a few things to announce. First, I want to say it's American Education Week, and I'm happy to share with you our proclamation on behalf of our mayor and CEO of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, Tyrone Gardner. He's unable to be with us this evening, but I do want to read the proclamation that he has sent in support of public education. Whereas, public education has long been the backbone of democracy, and whereas since his founding in 1921, the designation of American Education Week has sought to raise public awareness of the importance of education, and whereas the accomplishments and needs of public schools are far-reaching and deep, and whereas it is important to secure the cooperation and support from the public to meet the needs and continue the accomplishments of our public schools, and whereas this week, we honor the educators, counselors, nurses, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, and other school staff who make such a difference in our children's life, and whereas the Commission of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas encourages all citizens to recognize and encourage those involved in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools USD 500, Piper Schools USD 203, Turner Schools USD 202, and Bonners and Edwardville USD 204 for their invaluable contributions to our community's prosperity. Now, therefore, I, Tyrone Gardner, Mayor, CEO, the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 14th through the 18th, 2022 as American Education Week. So, again, I echo the sentiments of this, and we value all of our employees, and we just want to say thank you, and continue to take this time this week to recognize all of those who contribute to our public education, including our board members who work for free, and they (laugh) we appreciate everyone in their contributions to public education. I want to share that the Wyandotte County Legislative Breakfast will be hosted by Piper School District this year, and it'll be on Wednesday, December 14th at 8:30 a.m. at Piper High School, I believe. Board members, you should have received an invitation. If you can attend, please RSVP with Dr. Dane, but all of the Wyandotte County schools will be together to share our legislative agenda, and that is an item that the board will discuss this evening as well. The next item regarding cameras in the classroom, I do want to share that we, the board, will be providing multiple opportunities for staff, community, and students to share their thoughts and perspectives on cameras in the classroom. The first event will take place on December 7th, and it will be for our staff members. It will be here at district office from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We will, on that day, for the schools that end late, the late schools, we will allow them to leave professional development at 3:40 in order to have travel time. Mr. DeRosa and myself have worked together collaboratively. We will have an independent facilitator there, and we'll send more details around that. The two other events will be hosted by the Board of Education. The first one, both on December 17th, the first one is an in-person opportunity. It will be Saturday, December 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The location, we will confirm tomorrow when the board has an opportunity to talk. And then the second session will be virtual on the same day, Saturday, September 17th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Individuals are welcome to attend both or one. The format for the meeting will provide an opportunity for all who have thoughts, an opportunity to give input to the board. This, I just want to be clear, there's no decision that will be made until after the board has all of the input from the different meetings, and at that time, the board will determine what, when it will be brought back forth for a vote. I know there was some confusion. At a couple of our schools, cameras are currently being installed. Those cameras are related to safety and security specifically. We were awarded a safety and security grant, so cameras are being installed in hallways, and there are also being cameras outside on buildings, and then some of the common spaces that we typically will utilize for public, including gyms, possibly libraries, and some other spaces, what was deemed in that particular safety and security. Those cameras are not cameras in the classroom, and they are not a part of what was presented at the last board meeting. So I just want to clarify that, because we have gotten some questions and confusion, those cameras that are being installed are safety and security cameras, and they are being placed in common places. Several of our schools already have them, some of the schools did not, and then there also may be the possibility of updating and upgrading some cameras that were not working for specifically safety and security reasons. Reasons to Believe, it was a pleasure for the Kansas City, Kansas Schools Foundation to host its annual Reasons to Believe program last Thursday. The foundation honored 12 KC KPS alumni from five different high schools that were selected as the part of the 21-22 Reasons to Believe alumni honor roll, so I want to say congratulations to each of them. And I just want to remind everyone that this Thursday, beginning at 5:30 p.m., in conjunction with our Student Service Department, as well as some community partners, we will be hosting the Enough is Enough event. There will be food vendors, and there's a community fair that will be there. The first half of the event will feature more than two dozen organizations that offer resources to help promote positive health and wellness. In the second half of the evening, we'll feature a panel of community leaders discussing ways to combat gun violence. Attendees will be able to submit questions before the panel discussion. Panel guests will then address their questions and concern. We look forward to the community dialogue and collaboration, and we hope to see you there on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few comments on my end. This weekend, I, along with several other board members, were able to attend, and Dr. Stubblefield, were able to attend the KASB Annual Conference in Wichita. It was a great weekend of learning and connecting with colleagues around the state, as well as hearing about what's happening in the state and in the nation regarding education. The information was really helpful for our board as we continue to work on our strategic goals and our strategic priorities. One, a couple of things I'll share from Dr. Randy Watson, the Commissioner of Education, who shared that districts should really be focusing on lowering chronic absenteeism, moving students academically out of Level 1, and helping students to develop self-regulation initiative, goal-setting, self-efficiency, and perseverance skills. So just a few nuggets that he shared, and there's a lot of really great information on board. Thank you for joining us. For those that couldn't make it, I know we'll be able to share some additional information from the conference, and I know there were some handouts and materials that will be available for you as well. So, but thank you to those members that were able to attend the conference. Speaking of goals and priorities, don't forget, board, that we have a session tomorrow from 3:00 to 7:00 with Marsha from KASB as we continue our work on our goals and our priorities. That will include information that Dr. Watson shared over the weekend. That is, that will be at MVP Law. Mr. Gohean and his team will host us again from 3:00 to 7:00 tomorrow, and dinner will be provided for the board, and we'll, again, just go through our goals and priorities. You should have received an email that Marsha sent out late yesterday, that I sent out to the board to make sure that we do some homework before we reach our session tomorrow regarding your input and thoughts on our goals and priorities. So please make sure you take a look at that if you haven't had a chance to do so already. I also wanted to share publicly during a regular board meeting, that at one of our special meetings from the board last week, I believe it was, the board did establish a facilities committee that will help to move along discussions around our facilities. The members of the committee include Ms. Rachel Russell, who will chair the committee, Dr. Valdina Nguyen, and Ms. Janie Humphries, who are also the two other board representatives as a part of that committee. So I know there's a lot of work for that committee, and they will be getting going soon. Board members, don't forget to make sure to send your nominations of community members to Ms. Russell by the end of this month, and then those nominations will come before the board at our December board meeting. Again, I'll just reiterate, I know Dr. Stubblefield mentioned it already, but again, our Enough is Enough panel and community forum this Thursday, super important, so make sure you're spreading the word, inviting our community members, our students, and our families to attend, to learn about some of the resources available to them, but to hear about and to have some feedback, again, on how we can stop some of this gun violence. We know as a district, we cannot do it alone. It has to be a community initiative, and together, we've got to work to prevent and stop this gun violence that we're seeing, especially amongst our use, and then the drug issues that we're seeing with fentanyl as well. We've got to come together to do better, to love on our students and our families. So let's make sure that we all show up this Thursday at 5:30 at Harmon High School. Last, well, just two more. Again, I want to congratulate all of our student athletes and those that participate in the arts and music and other extracurricular activities during the first part of the school year. We've got some talented students. As you saw tonight, you got to see some students who were here, who we are honoring, doing some amazing things. I think anytime we get the chance to lift up our students, we should. So just congratulations to all of our student athletes and those that participate in extracurricular activities. I had the pleasure of, and the honor of, joining the Sumner Academy Boys Football Team as they hosted a home playoff game. It was a cold and rainy evening, but they played their hearts out. Wasn't the result that they wanted, I know, but it was great to see our student athletes out there competing. It was great to see our parents and families that were there supporting them. I had some really great conversations in the cold rain with some parents and some community members, but it was, it was just great to see them out there. So thank you to everyone who continues to support, not just our student athletes, but those that participate in the music programs, the art programs, and any other extracurricular activities that this district provides. Last, board members, you should have received an email from Ms. Leslie Smith regarding the NSBA Conference. If you are interested, please make sure you reply to her before the end of the day tomorrow. I know she's working to finalize that list from the board, so please make sure you take a look at that and respond to her before end of day tomorrow. So with that, I will end my comments, and we'll open it up for any other board members. Ms. Drew?
Just wanted to highlight some of the things that I've attended. First of all, and on October 29th, they had at First AME Church, What's Happening in the Dot Community Event, and they had several important people, but I was honored to note that our superintendent, Dr. Anna Stubblefield, was there giving a presentation. Also, I attended the Fairfax Luncheon at the Board of Public Utilities Office, and this was recommended by Commissioner Gail Townsend. Fairfax Industrial Association is celebrating 100 years and is looking how they can connect with our school district in order to connect students and staff, as well as parents. And this was, as I said, it was presented by Commissioner Gail Townsend, and in recommending that, we had the Wyandotte High School Chamber Singers to perform at this event, and so it was an excellent this event, and so it was an excellent event in which we're looking forward to making that connection with them. I also, as, attended the KASB Annual Convention in Wichita, Kansas, and we were honored by one of the presenters, which was our own, Rachel Russell, who talked about first-year Board members being a part of the district and what they can do to help. And so I just wanted to report that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Additional comments, Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. I also attended the First AME Event. On November 10th, from 8:00 to 4:00, I attended a special K-12 Budget Committee that had a focus of special ed funding. And after a full day of discussion, we, at the end, we found out the, I guess, the hidden message in the manner of the data that was presented. And so the chairperson alluded to four options that I think Mr. Francisco, I'm sure, shared with Dr. Stubblefield and Dr. Lowry, that there probably will be a discussion in the next session of amending the statute that deals with special ed, and amending it so that they believe, those who don't want to support any additional funding, they believe that if you add all the weights to the students, then you can get up to 92%. There is a problem, because there are some districts that are getting 200% of their excess costs. And so there is an equity problem in the formula. So news at 11:00. We'll see how that turns out, because while the federal law mandates a certain amount, the state comes up short, and there are some who just don't want to provide additional funding. So, and then later that evening, I attended the KSB Board Meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Can I add on?
Ms. Clark, yeah.
I was also able to attend the What's Happening at the DOT. But what I want to highlight is, I was, as a parent, I was able to attend family advocacy at two of our schools. While I was only able to go to two of the schools, because that's where my students attended, I'm sure this stands true for all. The staff were very committed. They spent a lot of time there. They spent lots of time with the families, and all the ones I went to were extremely organized. It was not chaotic. You were able to walk in, you knew exactly where you were going. So just a shout out to our staff, and thank you for all that you've done with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. All right. Lots going on always in KC KPS and in our community, so thank you, Board members, for all your time and that you give to our Board and our district. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up is our Community Comment section. We do have some community comments signed up today. Just a reminder about our policy, please make sure that, before you leave, that you check in with our Board Clerk to make sure that we have your contact information for, so that we may follow up with you. Reminder, please make sure that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you go beyond the three minutes, we'll politely ask you, let you know that you are at time. There is a timer in front of you as well. Again, per policy, we would ask that you not speak any specific names of individuals. If your comments are regarding any particular individuals, we would ask that you refrain from naming any names during the comment, especially regarding students or staff. So with that, we will invite up our first community comment, Javier Ochoa Rodriguez, if you are present. Nope, okay. The next community comment will come from Mia Giselle Espinoza Gracián. Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for having me today. I know, as soon as I say my name, time's going to start. My name is Mia Espinoza. I'm a senior from Wyandotte High School. Today, I'm speaking regarding the $6.78 million project of incorporating cameras in the classroom within the Windot Cluster. My first concern is how the specific purpose of the camera has not been communicated clearly. The lack of communication is alarming, especially with the reasoning changing from safety and security to education center. What is the real reason for cameras in the classroom? I'd also like for you to consider how fast your district is adopting the school-to-prison pipeline. I recognize a lot of the measures implemented are for safety. However, I disagree with unnecessary additions to this assimilation, such as cameras, in the classroom. When people are in prison, the main thing prisoners lose are privacy and trust. They're no longer trusted. This is the message you will be giving your staff and students. Students in your building already have to walk through metal detectors every morning, are yelled at to get to class, and seemingly supervised every minute of the day, and now you will be monitoring within the classroom too? If the purpose is security, the major misbehaviors do not occur in the classrooms, but in the hallways, cafeterias, and on school grounds. If the purpose is education, in addition to the non-competitive wages and abysmal benefits our teachers are offered, the lack of trust is likely to be the last shot to push them away. This will leave the teacher shortage at a bigger emergency than before. As a member of the Windot Student Council, my number-one priority is to listen to the students I help represent, making decisions in their best interest. Do you think the spending of $6.78 million on technology that only seems to impact students negatively is a good representation of the students in your district? Alternatives to the destination of this budget are not hard to find. If access to quality education is your concern, build safer sidewalks for the eight-year-olds walking long distances to school. Offer better pay to recruit more teachers and bus drivers. Rehabilitate the classrooms in need for safer renovations. Every teacher in every classroom will be able to give you at least 10 different and more urgent suggestions to the spending of this budget before they mention cameras in the classroom. In addition, the budget for the cameras mentioned above is only for the Windot Cluster. What about the three other clusters in our district? Will we also spend $6.78 million on each of them too? This is also, this also leads me to wonder why the Windot Cluster was chosen. Is it due to our diversity, the minority population, the income class in our area? Don't misunderstand me. All of my points above apply to the rest of the high schools as well. I'm sure a number of you have shattered a class before. The student participation is not where we like it to be, and by adding constant audio and video surveillance to the classroom, the participation will continue to lower. Finally, the student-teacher trust in the classroom will always benefit the students positively. This is especially true when the students are in dangerous situations. They confide in the teachers to let them know what's happening in their personal lives. This allows proper measures to be taken to ensure students are safe even when out of school. Cameras in the classroom will no longer leave room for such conversations. I took the time today not only to incorporate my thoughts into this, but also the ones of elementary students, high school students, parents, and teachers of the Windot Cluster. As an older sister, a first-generation student, a student council member, and a cheerleader, it is my duty to leave this place better than I found it by encouraging others to do so as well, leading by example. Thank you so much, Board.
Thank you, Mia. Our next comment will come from Ms. Henrietta Clark. Okay, thank you. I couldn't hear her. Thank you. No, that's okay. I just couldn't hear you. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Chaney, actually. I'm coming to speak on the cameras in the classroom as well. She hit a lot of good points that I didn't think about, but the ones that I did were that if you are going to put that budget money into something in the school, as in securing them, it should go more towards maybe alarms on the doors for kids going in and out, or lighting the parking lots and putting them in the hallways and outside of the school versus putting them in the classrooms, because most of the time when the kids are in the classroom, that's where they're safe. And if something's going to happen that's not safe, it's going to be outside the school or someone letting someone in that doesn't belong there. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney. Our next community comment will come from Ms. Angelin Howell.
Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, President Lopez, and Board members.
Good evening.
I am Angelin Howell. I would like to thank Dr. Campbell, our Associate Superintendent, Dr. Bilbo Irving, our Executive Director of High School, and Ms. Mary Stewart, Windot High School Principal. You all have taken time to speak with me this week concerning notebooks and outdated curriculum. They all have agreed to work with us to improve and fill the gaps that they have become aware of in the individual buildings. They have agreed to keep us informed on the progress of filling in the gaps, not just for Windot, but for all high schools in the district. We would like to suggest continuity throughout the district pertaining to curriculum and books. I would like to thank the other parents and community members who are here supporting me and the students of District 500. If you all could stand up, it'd be great. Thank you for continuing to work on the progress of mobilizing our parents and community members. This is only the beginning of the quest to reform our educational system and practices. If you are interested in meeting with us, we meet every Saturday at 11:00 AM at First Baptist Church, Fifth and Nebraska. Are there any questions? Thank you for your time, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Thank you to your guests that you brought with you today. Thank you for joining us this evening. It's always great to see more folks in the boardroom for Board meetings. We love seeing a full boardroom, so thank you for joining us. We'll make sure that Dr. Campbell or our staff follows up with each of the folks who have signed up for Community Comment, in case there's anything additional that we would need to follow up on. So I know Dr. Campbell and her team have already been in contact with some of you, but we'll continue to make sure that we follow up. Yes, Dr. Stubblefield.
And I apologize, I meant to say this during my comments. For our students, you will have an opportunity, we will, during FA, your Family Advocacy time, our high school students, you will receive a survey to give your direct input on cameras in the classroom, but you're more than welcome to participate in the virtual or the in-person one, but in, to, in order to make it more equitable, we are using some FA time to give you an opportunity to participate in a survey or thought exchange to give your direct input, so that we can collect it in that main manner to share with the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up is Board Agenda Item Number 7. Board, these items have come before the Board previously and have been discussed in some fashion, but they are coming before you for approval or action tonight. First on our agenda is our Backsnack MOU. It is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU between Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and Harvester's Backsnack Program for Hazel Grove Elementary School, as submitted by Ms. Jennifer Hornbeck, Hazel Grove Elementary School Principal, Mr. Markey Stewart, Executive Director of Schools, Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it's recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU with the Unified Government of Windot County, Kansas City, Kansas Public Health Department, as submitted by Tiffany Lewis, Director of Health Services, and Dr. Jermaine Wilson, Executive Director of Student Services and Family Support, Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of new cubicles for the third-floor corridor of Central Office, and the amount of $54,466.21 from Scott Rice of Kansas City, as submitted by Wayne Carell, Director of Purchasing, Steve Lilly, Chief Operating Officer, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it's recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the low bid from Vasquez Commercial Contracting in the amount of $1,683,738 to replace eight air handling units at Quindarrow Elementary, in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED, as submitted by Wayne Carell, Director of Purchasing, Mr. Steve Lilly, Chief Operating Officer, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, it is recommended that the Board of Education for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools approve the school superintendent, the superintendent contract for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Dr. Nguyen.
Mr. Lopez, I'm just disappointed that we haven't had a chance to discuss it, so, as in written format.
And I would, Dr. Nguyen, thank you. I would just say that we've been discussing this topic for four months.
No, we haven't seen the formal document. Let me clarify my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the document was submitted and sent to the full Board earlier this week, so we should have all had a chance to review and see the document. We've had discussions, and so know what was in the document as well. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Before I vote, I just want to make a statement. There was one aspect I didn't agree with, and for me, I couldn't agree with that in respect to the constituents in our county. I didn't think that would be fair to them. If that wasn't there, I would vote yes, but I'm voting no because of that one part.
Dr. Nguyen.
Too, I'm disappointed in a certain aspect of the contract. It's no way a reflection on anyone, and so I must vote no.
Thank you. Motion carries. And I'll just say again, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, for continuing to serve as our Superintendent and leader in the district. I know it's not the easiest job in the world, but we are glad to have you here in our district leading us and continuing to reach for our goals that we have as a district. So we'll continue on with our agenda. Next up is Agenda Item Number 8, Kansas City, Kansas Library, so I would invite Ms. Carol Levers to come forward for the Library Director's Report. As she's coming forward, I do just want to brag on our library just a little bit. Recently, last week, I had the chance to go say hello to all of our library staff. Thank you, Ms. Levers, for the invitation, and so it was nice to see our staff and to say hello, and I know you all had a great day of professional development, so I'm glad to see that. During that time, I also was able to congratulate the library staff and the library as a whole for your recognition from K-State Extension, for the award that you received from K-State Extension, and that's not all. Recently, there was an article in The Pitch that, and let me make sure I get this correct, that recognized the Kansas City, Kansas Public School Library, Main Branch Library, as the best library branch in Kansas. Congratulations to Carol and to your staff. It truly is a testament to the services that you're able to provide for our community. I know during the pandemic, you all were a staple and were there serving and welcoming and doing the best that you could to serve our community, so thank you for that. And I know you all put a lot of time and effort into the programming that you provide for not just our children, but for adult services as well, which I think is to be commended and recognized. So thank you and to your staff for all the work that you do.
Appreciate it, Mr. Lopez. I may have, I should have just left the report and just let you do the whole month. That's, you know, and we could have gone to the next stage. But good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield, obviously, he's already taken the thunder, so that... Dr. Stubblefield, obviously, he's already taken the thunder, so that was the...
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Don't worry. It's the second year in a row that the main library has been chosen number one in Kansas libraries, and, you know, second runner-up was Johnson County.
Take that, Johnson County.
Yeah, I'm not going to go too, I'm going to go quick. Last night, we had to receive the award from K-State Research and Extension for the 2020 Second Extension Appreciation Award, and we really appreciate it. And, you know, you can read that, they said that their staff nominated the libraries as one of the most valuable partners, especially since the pandemic, like you've explained. Our organization or our library was willing to partner with them to provide educational programming on a virtual platform. This allowed us to deliver education to our residents when they needed it most. You know, when the schools were closed and libraries were closed, we decided we need to go back because our kids and our parents needed us, and our staff really turned 360, you know, to support our community. They say that our participations report reported lots of positive feedback on these programs, so their staff appreciates the library as a community partner, and they look forward for future collaboration. And it was a fantastic evening. People from K-State were there to, you know, present us with these awards, so we appreciate that. I'm just going to go quickly because I know we're going to have time, you know, for the next reward, but I just wanted to show you what happened in the month of October. We, and I'm going to go through quickly. At the main library, we had a trunk or treat. We had over 700 patrons, and our community partners came out to our parking lot at the back of the library and handed out candies and kits, and we were glad that the mayor was there to support us. We, at the Erfurth Schlegel, their theme for the month of October was Never Fear Fall Is Here, and we had 75 people turn up there, and of course, they introduced our newest family member, Tarantula, and we had night hikes and also crafts and storytime for that evening. The South Branch had Halloween Glow Celebration, that was their theme. We had 386 patrons, and of course, glow-in-the-dark bubbles were given out to all the kids who came. The Turner Community Library, the theme there was Fall Fest in the Garden, and everything was done in the garden. They prepared for 130 people, and 390 people turned up. So we had crafts, books giveaways, treats, and they had a fire show at the end of the evening. You know, Halloween was fantastic. I forgot. West Wyandotte had a family fun night. They had 368 people turn up, and we had a magic show, trick-or-treat stations, and of course, the KU Natural History Museum insect were on display. Author for the last month was anchor Matt Stewart. I'm sure you all know Matt from Fox News. He has a new book out called Unique Eats and Eat Trees of Kansas City, and apparently, he was a fantastic speaker, and everybody enjoyed him. He wants to come back. So on Thursday evening, our author for the month is Chen Julie Wong. That's how she wants us to pronounce her name, and that will be at 6:30 p.m. And if you're interested to hear or listen to our author, please just call the library so that they can send you the link for the Zoom, or just go online, kckpl.libri marker dot com, and then Chen Julie Wong. So right now, the main library quarterly update, as you've...
Before, I'm sorry, Carol, before you get to this quarterly update, just a motion to accept the Library Director's Report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Carol.
No, that's okay. I'm trying to, you know, my words here, but anyway, as I said, we were asked to bring our quarterly report to the Board for the main library project, and I would like to acknowledge our committee members and also staff, to just stand so that the Board can see you all. Not all of them could have been here because of the change of the board meeting. Quite a few are on the Kansas City Community College Board, so tonight is this, and some of us had other commitments as well, so we apologize for that. Thank you. So in August, we came to the Board to seek permission to move forward with the main project, and you gave us permission, but also asked us to bring a quarterly report, and this is three months away, three months ago, so this is your first quarterly report. But I'm not going to do it because we're going to do it in a closed session, but I just wanted to kind of give you some information, that the advisory group is a broad spectrum of the community, and we have neighborhood and community leaders. It includes Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Foundation members. We have the Mayor's Office, BPU, and UG Commissioners, that's also interested in supporting it. And of course, we have Kansas City, Kansas Public School Board members and Main Branch patrons, as well as library staff. In a little history of how this happened, in 2014, the Board, two members of the Board were asked to join this group, and that was Crystal Watson and the late George Bridenshall, and they were charged to lead the project as Board Representatives. Then in 2016, we had Mr. Harold Brown and Ms. Janie Humphries represent the Board. And then in 2018, Ms. Maxine Drew and, of course, Mr. Randy Lopez became the current Board Representatives for the program. So since last year, or the year before, I can't even remember, Mr. Lopez, Ms. Drew, and Ms. Humphries stayed and volunteered on this group. And I just want to read to you who the members are. We have Mr. Jim Schrader, and he's, he just wants to be known as a community volunteer, but he's on the Downtown Shareholder Board Member, and he's also a retired architect. Ms. Rosalyn Brown is on the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees. Both of them are co-chairpersons for our committee. We have Ms. Stevie Reynolds, she's a retired Girl Scouts Executive Director. Ms. Irene Cordillo, CEO of El Centro, and also a past Board Member. We have Ms. Carol Marinovich, who was the past Mayor for UG, and then Mr. J.D. Rios, he's UG Education Liaison and past Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools educator. We have Ms. Kathy Harding, who's the President and CEO of Wyandotte Health Foundation, and we have Ms. El Nora Jefferson, who's the co-founder of Groundwork Northeast Revitalization Group, and she's also President of the Oak Grove Neighborhood Association. We have Reverend Mylan, he's a pastor of Greater Faith Missionary Baptist Church. We have Patrice Townsend, she's on the Kansas City, Kansas Community Chamber as an officer and also a BPU employee. Ms. Mary Collins is now the new, or the interim Director of Downtown Shareholders. Ms. Pat Bruni, President and CEO of, then Malkat. Mr. Bill Johnson was the General Manager of BPU. Ms. Alana Coleman, who's a retired community volunteer. Mr. Greg Kindle, he's the President of Wyandotte Economic Development Council. Ms. Crystal Watson, Kansas City, Kansas Public School Foundation Director. Melissa Bynum, UG Commissioner. Ryan McKinnon, also a UG Commissioner. Tom Bowding, a retired judge and Library Foundation Board Member. And then we have our Board Members, our President, Mr. Randy Lopez, and Ms. Maxine Drew, and Ms. Janie Humphries. We have Kansas City, Kansas Public Staff, myself, and Ms. Laura Lovelace at the Main Branch Library, manager, and Sam Moore is the interim Director of, Assistant Director of Libraries, and Ms. Kim Murray, who's the Communication Librarian. District Staff Members is Mr. Doug Clemens, Director of Physical Properties, and Mr. Lilly, Chief of Operations, and also Mr. Brad Isnott, Director of Finance. These are the people that's on the committee, and there's a lot of people still on, not the side, but they're waiting until we get all the information so that they can help with whatever we need to do, but I'll leave it up to you to take us into closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Levers. At this time, I would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss acquisition of property purchase, going in at 6:36 for 30 minutes.
Moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Clark. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll invite Sam Re, Steve, and Dr. Campbell to please come into session with us.
And we'll be in the East Wing.
And we'll be in the East Wing.
Motion to return to open session, please.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Not Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen, thank you.
All right, we are back in open session. Thank you, everybody. Our next agenda item, um, board, these are new business items that are coming before you for information only. Hopefully, you had a chance to review these and the information. There's no real presentation, um, following these two agenda items. Again, they're just for information. They will come back before the board for potential action at a later board meeting unless there are any specific questions on either of the two agenda items listed under item number 10.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Page.
I have a question. Uh, for the peach jar, this particular year, it would be free. And then is that a yearly? Is it always gonna be free?
I see Mr. Birch nodding his head. Yes, so, yes. No cost.
And if there ever was a cost, we could either end it or bring it back to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I have some, but I'll send them.
Okay, yeah, if you do have questions, if more come up, please send those to Dr. Stubblefield. Ms. Page, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
You, for item B, we're doing A and B, right?
Yes, A and B. Any questions on A or B?
I see improvement for Harmon, but there had been concerns from some parents about Wyandotte and the lighting in the back. So will that be addressed at some point? I know this is just for Harmon, but there were concerns about the lighting in the back for Wyandotte in terms of security. So I don't know where they are.
Doug is coming forward.
Doug coming up.
To discuss the plan.
Post at the front. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, this particularly is Harmon. We've had quite a few comments and concerns about Harmon and the safety to the distance. Have not looked at Wyandotte. We can certainly look at that one as well. Uh, I don't have any kind of plan or anything to share with you, but if that's an area of concern, uh, we can sure look at that.
Hey, 'cause I've received emails and calls from some parents at Wyandotte. I just thought maybe it was on a list. I didn't know if you do the way you normally do it.
It is now.
Oh, okay. If they would address that, because there's still concern about that lighting in the back. So I didn't know if Slago had a problem or Washington. We wanna make sure everybody's safe. Just asking, 'cause they do call, they see this, and they wanna know what about the other schools. So I know you normally have a list and you have a rotation. I didn't know if this is how it works, or would they add it to check into that?
I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll review that and take a look and actually take a look at the lighting that's back there right now. I mean, I can't really tell you, but I know exactly what the conditions are. I have not re, I have not received complaints, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. We'll take a look at it, and if we need to take some action, we can bring it back.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can I add on to that? I would, I would echo Ms. Page, and I think we've, it's been a while, but I think we talked about it, um, from like the baseball. I know you're not talking about baseball, but I think if we're gonna look at lighting at Wyandotte, we probably need to look at all the lighting at Wyandotte, because I can speak for firsthand experience. They've had to shut down games because the baseball park doesn't have the correct lighting and so on and so forth. So I just think that instead of piecing it together, let's look at the whole school if we're looking at outside lighting.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Ms. Page. Additional questions on either items A or B? Again, if you do have more questions, please send those along to Dr. Stubblefield. We'll make sure to get those answered for everyone. Thank you. All right, continuing with our agenda. Next up, item number 11, Board Discussion Legislative Priorities. I believe we have Mr. Bill Brady with us via Zoom to review our legislative priorities. I don't have my Zoom up, so I can't see.
Yes, sir.
There he is. Hey, Bill, how are you? Good evening.
Evening, evening. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you for a few minutes tonight about next, next session, what the agenda we think will be. Just as a reminder, the 23 session starts, uh, the second Monday of January, which this year is January 9th, and we'll probably have the gubernatorial inaugural that same day, I assume. So, um, we'll get started right after the first of the year. Issues, uh, 20, uh, the, the 2023 session will be working on the 2024 budget, uh, proposal the governor will submit to the legislature, and that 2024 is pretty important because it's the first year, uh, of, uh, that we're past the five-year additional funding program for the, uh, the Gannon, uh, the Supreme Court approved in the Gannon decision. Uh, and so the CPI kicks in now in fiscal year 2024, and the governor legislature approved a 3% increase in the CPI. The, the law says that they would use the a, the average of the last three years for the Midwest CPI. And I've been told by folks in the governor's office that the number that they used last year, 3%, is a little low based on, uh, what, what inflation has been in the last year. And of course, it's a three-year average, so they have to work it through. So there may be some additional money. That, that money is very important because that's money goes on the base, base state aid, and of course, the weight, some of the major weightings that we depend on, the at-risk weighting and the high-density at-risk weighting, uh, key off of that, there are percentage off of that. So, so we'll, of course, uh, be actively watching that. And then Representative Nguyen mentioned, uh, special ed, that, that will be a huge issue this year. Uh, the Republican leadership and the House, in the House Committee clearly is opposed last year during the veto session, attempts to put some additional money in, uh, special ed. Uh, just as a reminder, you know, where we are, uh, basically, um, special ed funding is being funded district by district throughout the state. But the problem is, is that, uh, districts are using, having to use general fund money in order to pay for special education costs that are mandated by the federal law. So, uh, what a lot of legislators were attempting to do, will, to, tempted to educate legislators about the importance of special ed and the fact that, uh, many students that are receiving special ed funding are also general ed class, uh, students for a good percentage of the day in some cases. So when we take money out of the general fund to fund special ed, you, you hurt all students, including the special ed students who, uh, need the resources for gen ed classes as well. So, uh, we were pleased that the governor made it a focus in her reelection campaign, and we're optimistic that she will put, uh, more money in for special ed in her budget. It's always easier in the legislative process to defend something that's already there as opposed to trying to get something additional in. So, uh, we're hopeful about that. Uh, in terms of what we see, uh, the House and Senate committees' agenda to be, uh, we see more, uh, focus on the parental rights, uh, bill, and, you know, that it's a bit of a misnomer of, uh, the terminology, in my opinion, of what it is. It, uh, it's billed as a parental bill, uh, rights bill. It's an issue that's, uh, the Republican Party has used nationwide, uh, in numerous states. The proposal that we saw in Kansas actually was, uh, written by an out-of-state interest group, uh, from Florida. So, uh, I call it personally, I, my personal view of it, it's more of an administrative nightmare bill because it gives, uh, parent, individual parents' rights, uh, to, uh, that they would, could claim in order to, uh, if they're, if they're, they didn't want their child to have a piece, a certain part of the curriculum, uh, that, that, that the school would have to acknowledge individual rights. And, um, you know, it's, it's just administrative nightmare, uh, to, I think, to try to administer. So, um, where does the, the rights of one parent, uh, stop, uh, when it, when it affects the rights of another parent? That child is right next, sitting right next to that, that child. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that issue. Uh, we, we anticipate, you know, another major effort on the transgender bill. That, that'll be back this year. And we believe that there'll be a voucher. Uh, they call, they call it education empowerment, but, but essentially, it's a voucher program where the state would, um, for qualified students through some sort of process that, that the bill would, uh, require, uh, the state would provide tax dollars, uh, so that students could attend private schools. Um, and, um, again, uh, that, that issue is being, is, you know, a, a major political issue of one political party, and, uh, we anticipate that it'll be in Kansas this year in terms of bill form. So, uh, we'll be monitoring that as well. So those are kind of the, those are kind of the major, uh, issues that I see. Be happy to answer any questions about them. Uh, um, look forward to, uh, the, the pre-session legislative meeting we're gonna have this year at Piper that we're gonna participate in. We have four new House members in the Wyandotte County delegation. Uh, so we've got, uh, you know, an opportunity to, to, uh, familiar, familiarize them with, uh, the good things that we're doing in USDA, USD 500, and, uh, and hopefully, uh, develops more advocates. We've got a really good delegation in, in Topeka. Uh, they tend to want to, uh, know what we want and want to, uh, understand, you know, the, the challenges that we have, and, uh, and that's great. You know, a lot of, a lot of districts can't say that. Uh, they, you know, have, uh, more of a confrontational, um, situation with their legislative delegation. So it's important for us to be transparent and communicate with them, and, and, uh, December 14th will be the first opportunity to officially do that.
Awesome. Thank you for the update, Bill. We'll open it up for questions. Um, I do have, um, just some quick questions and, and nothing that we really need to discuss tonight, but I am curious, Bill, on a few, a few items with the governor's reelection. Um, I know with the zero food tax, um, I wonder if with some of the budget surplus and, and with some of the moves in the state, if that's something that might be expedited a little quicker than, than what originally was anticipated? Um, just my own curiosity on what that may look like. Also, I know there's an interest on both sides of the aisle around mental and behavioral health funding, um, and across the state, if there will be some legislation that might, um, put in some more funding for mental and behavioral health from the state level that might impact, um, our school districts. Um, and then I know this is a question I always ask, but regarding in-state tuition for undocumented, um, students. I know with our friend Chris Kobach being elected, um, that is, has always been a target of his, and I'm wondering if there's anything the school district, um, or the school districts could do to advocate for that bill. And I forget which, exactly which bill that is, but to make sure that that stays in place. And the last one I know just from, um, um, is, is one that, that's been continued to be discussed. Kansas is one of 11 states. It is, has yet to expand Medicaid. Um, I know that's an uphill climb here in Kansas, um, but at some point, that nut's gotta crack. Um, I would, I would suspect, I think it's, it would be a difficult climb. I think, um, I would be opposed to any, anything, um, I, I just, well, I guess I, I would just hope that we don't try to piecemeal Medicaid expansion, 'cause I don't think that's, that would be the right approach. But, um, just something to keep an eye, eye on, and I wonder if, if as a school district, uh, or school districts, if we had any role to play in any of that. So I know I just dumped a lot on you, but, um, nothing that we really need to discuss, but just something to keep on your radar in terms of all of those that might be helpful that we can discuss on the 14th. Any questions for Bill?
I have one.
I have one. Have they worked out the kinks? I know it's supposed to start in 2023, '24 academic year about students being able to go to any school they wanted to go to. Are all those kinks worked out where we all understand? Like, what happens if kid comes to us and they stay till the 20th, we do the count, and then they leave? Just wondering, you know, what happens? Because that's a problem, and some of that's not clear.
Yeah, we, we got a extension on that. We got that bill in conference, we got that extended for three years before it would go into effect. So we still have two more school years, but you're, you're exactly right. There are the devils in the details on that one, and there are a lot of issues that have to be addressed. So I'm, I'm believing that KSDE is taking the lead on that in terms of, you know, dealing with some of the administrative issues. But we do have a little more time. We were able to get that extended until, I think, the...
Twenty-four.
Twenty, let's see, this would be the, next year would be the '23, '24. I don't believe it starts till '25, '26 school districts.
Mr. Brady, I just want to add, the board does have a responsibility to adopt policy around it in 2023, so that is something...
Okay.
That it's coming up. And I'm not sure if it's '25, '26, or '24, '25, but the board does have to adopt policy around it. And I, this is just based off what I've been following, is I don't think there will be clarity. I do think there will be lots of challenges. I think KSDE will probably give some general guidance around what the policy should include. But I think as the law is written, right now, students would have to declare by May 1st, I mean, if schools are going to take them. And so right now, the way the funding is set up, you would, you could potentially, it's in the rear, so your count is based off the previous year. So if you receive students, you can potentially be underfunded for a year and then the next year be fully funded. And there's a potential that if those students don't meet the policy and guidelines, they can go back to their home district, and then their home district will be underfunded. But I, unless they take it back up in the legislation, there, those are the, the things that will just be a result of it. The board can establish, have to establish policy around it, and I expect that KSDE will give some guidance. I do know that one advocacy group, there are some specific things that superintendents have reported that it will be great if there was consistency around, and so they may be taking that back to see if it can be included in the legislation or the law around it.
Come in, yes, Dr. Wayne.
Bill. Hello. With the potential of Dan Hawkins becoming the speaker, how would you speculate on the possibility of Medicaid expansion?
Medicaid expansion is going to be a very difficult uphill task. I don't disagree with anything to what the chair said in terms of the need and, and I think it's important that we continue to talk about it with, with our delegation. Like I mentioned, we have four new people in our delegation. One of them is, I think, currently an employee of University of Kansas Hospital. So I'm sure she knows a bit about the issue, but, 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 I mean, I think that it's a great issue to bring up at the forum.
No, that was my question. My question is the likelihood of Dan Hawkins even allowing it to come to the floor of the House at least.
Yeah, well, it's going to be tough. I mean, I don't, I don't, but, but I don't think the answer is just ignore it.
Oh, no, we never have ignored it. So, you know, that's not even a thought.
Yeah.
And also, what is Renee Erickson's position since she is, I think, is she vice chairman of Senate Ed?
Yes.
How, how is her, what is her position on socially, more funding for social emotional learning, you remember?
She's pretty opposed to it. Concerned about, I mean, it's, it's a concern of, you know, she's one of the leaders in the conservatives in the legislature, and it's one of their current, one of their concerns.
So my point is, these issues are super important, but they're just roadblocks. And, and these people are in, all of a sudden, the camera, what happened to him? They're in key positions to just straight out block.
Yeah.
That's a sad thing.
There is a lot of bipartisan support for the mental health work that's been done in the last four or five years. And, you know, we were one of the original pilot school districts. We're very fortunate that we were in that first year, and we've, you know, been able to receive the funds for several years now. And there are a lot of districts that haven't even, haven't, aren't even part of the program. So there is interest, and there's a bipartisan interest in expanding it. And we may see the governor recommend some additional money for it. So, you know, I think there'll be some serious discussions about that. And I'm cautiously optimistic about that issue, but it's, it's more of a challenge in Medicaid expansion because leadership takes, you know, they're, they're opposed to, you've been talking about it. So it is a challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for Bill? Seeing none, again, thank you, Bill, for the information. I know we've got that session on December 14th where we'll discuss some of these priorities and just get an update. Again, appreciate your time. Lots of roadblocks, I know, on a lot of the issues that impact our students, but I think we, as Dr. Nguyen said, that's never stopped us before, and we'll continue plugging along. I continue to remain an optimist and hopeful that we'll get some of these things done. I do think one of these days we will get Medicaid expanded in Kansas. Call me wishful thinking, but I do think we'll get there. We'll keep plugging along and working, and some of these other issues, I think we'll get there. We've just got to keep working hard at it. So thanks, Bill. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, we will continue on with our agenda. We have come up to our executive sessions.
Yes, staff, you are free to go with the exception of Ms. Devon, who will be joining us in two of the sessions.
Thank you. And I will say, I know we said it earlier, but again, congratulations to Dr. Nguyen since we're talking about these legislative priorities on your, on your win this past week. You continue to advocate and know the challenges that, that are in Topeka, so thank you for advocating for our district and congratulations. All right, so I will entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, going in at 7:35 for...
Seven thirty-six.
Seven thirty-six for 10 minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Right, Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Yolanda Brownlee Page.
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for ten more minutes.
So moved.
Seconded. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Yolanda Brownlee Page.
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
Motion to recess to executive sessions to discuss matters of client attorney privilege for 10 minutes with action to follow going in at eight oh...
Seven.
Seven.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approves the designation of Angela Monroe, Human Resources Supervisor of Operations, and Crystal Primer, Senior Benefit Specialist, as agents for the Kansas Public Employees Retirement Systems, as submitted by Sam Marie Devon, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are motions to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to the coma for 20 minutes going in at 8:20.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.